Before I open the meeting, a few things to go over, nothing terrible. First off, I'd like to recognize Homer Aghorn Jr. for serving for the last couple of years in selectmen. Thank you very much, Homer. Andy Lassner back there, thank you, Andy, for setting the audio up, the filming and everything. Couldn't have done it without you, I know I couldn't have, so, Andy, thank you. And last but not least, he's not here, Tom Billado, who set everything up for us yet again. Thank you, Tom, if you're watching this break, thank you. Okay, as I see people coming in, everybody that can vote, you got one of these? Got a motorcade? If you do not, put your hand up, and we'll get you a couple. Okay, a couple of public service amendments, six o'clock tonight, you know, ahead, so that you can listen out. And a second thing, if you have batteries in your smoke detectors, this is the time they tell you to change them. So, just as a good thing, working smoke detectors are a great thing. As I've done in the past, takes two-thirds to table, two-thirds to bring for reconsideration. We'll do a motion, do a second. If you want to make an amendment, it's going to be in writing, requesting a paper ballot on anything. I need five signatures of registered voters. And we are all going to be very civil to each other today. Okay, we're all friends and neighbors, we all know each other, there are a few strangers in this room. But we will be decent, we'll speak to you once, and the second time, Chief Trot, we'll spend some quality time with you somewhere else. Doesn't really matter, hopefully it's not with me. So, all of that, I think I've covered everything. First off, would you all please stand for all the silence, if you can? And if you'd join me in a pledge of allegiance, flag at the back of the room? To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much, thank you all for coming out. The Congress brought my attention, if you need to be sworn in for an office that you've been elected to, please stick around. We can end the meeting. To the end of the meeting, to have that done. Couple more people have come in that are voters, Angel, if you could pick from a couple of cards, please, thank you. Everybody all set, everybody's got a card? Okay, very good. To the inhabitants, the town of Runworth and Grafton County, the state of New Hampshire, where qualified to vote in town fairs. You hereby notify and warn the election of town officers of the said town of Runworth, the Runworth Elementary School, 1247 Mount Musa Lock Highway, Route 25, Runworth, New Hampshire, on Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. The polls open at 11:00 a.m., will close at 7:00 p.m. Bring in your votes on Article One, which is the election of town officers. All our articles will be presented and discussed on an active bond Saturday, March 14th, 2021, beginning, well, at 1:00 o'clock. Meeting for said purpose to be held at Runworth Elementary School. Article One, to choose the elect, was the election of officers, the two all necessary town officers for the ensuing year official ballot, basically the formalities, need a motion to accept that?
Motion.
Motion, Andy Lassner, and a second, Brian Ueys. I'm assuming there's no discussion on that. All in favor of Article One is read, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, the ayes have it, Article One passes. Article Two, receive reports from the selectmen, town clerk, tax collector, treasurer, auditors, and other town officers, and devote on any motion related to this report. A motion to accept that is read? Motion, Brian Ueys, and a second, I saw somebody stand, Morgan Courier. Any discussion on this, any questions? Article Two, receive the reports from the selectmen, town clerk, tax collector, treasurer, auditors, and other town officers, and devote on any motion related to those reports. All in favor of Article Two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, the ayes have it. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,607 for the general municipal operations, for the purposes detailed in the operating budget, operating budget posted with the warrant. This article does not include any amounts contained in any other article. A motion to accept that is read? Or a motion to bring to the floor?
Looking to say.
There we go, motion. Motion, Kate Bailey. And a second, Donna King. Questions or comments? Come up to the microphone, please state your name.
May I take this off while I'm speaking? No. As you know, I am going to speak on this particular article, not because what I have to say pertains to this article solely, but because it pertains to all the articles that are about to come up. Last year, I predicted that due to the $50,000 to $100,000 surplus in your different budgets, that your tax rate would go up $3 to $4 per thousand. When you got your tax bill, you noticed that it was only $2.54 up. I say only because that's ridiculous to start with, but that's what it was. First thing I wanted to know was why it was only $2.54, because I know how to compute tax rates. There were two reasons why it went up only $2.54. One of which you've got to be thankful for, the assessed value of the town, you can find this in your town report for 2019 and 2020, around 48, page 48 and 50. The assessed value of the town as a whole went up about $1,500.50. That fact alone saved you on the average of .38 on your tax rate. The second thing that is noticeable, and you have to look at the 2019, 2020 books to get these figures, the revenues for 2019 was $414,872. The revenues for 2020 was $576,765. That's approximately $162,000, yeah, $162,000 increase in your revenues. That saves you $1.62 on the tax rate. If you had taken all these into consideration, your tax rate would have been $5.24 higher, not just $3.4. One sad thing about all this is that $162,000 revenue, $85,000 of it, I can guarantee you, will not be a revenue source next year. It was a revenue source this year because it came from the insurance company in settlement of a matter that was a legal issue. And some of you know what that's all about, probably most know what that was all about. But that $85,000 will not be available another year for one-time shock. That figure alone is going to raise your tax rate, .85 on a thousand. With everything I've got for tax to go on, I figure your tax rate next year will go up between $2 per thousand and $3.65 per thousand. To put that in dollars and cents, if you own a $100,000 house, which is probably the lowest in some cases, that'll take your tax up $200, based on everything I have to go on. If you have a $200,000 house, you can double that, it'll go up $400 on that one property. And at the worst case, and as I see it, it could go up $3.65. That means a $100,000 house, the taxes would go up $365. On a $200,000 house, they would go up double that, $730,000. All of these numbers are starting to become insurmountable to some people that already can't afford their taxes. Something has got to be done by sensible people to eliminate some of these expenses. You've got to go back to an absolute need, not just a need. You've got to look at things on a more detailed basis for what's happening, repeat. The fact that you won't have $85,000 coming in for revenue next year is definitely going to increase your taxes, that .85. And the reason I say .85, one thing I carry around in my mind, is $1 on your tax rate raises $100,000 in monetary amounts of money. That's not exact, the exact amount is $1 on your tax rate brings in $98,339. But I can't figure with that number there, so I use $100,000 as what $1 creates. And something's got to be done. Thank you. Anybody else, questions or comments?
Article Three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,607 for the general municipal operations, for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with the warrant. This article does not include any amounts contained in any other article. All in favor of Article Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, the ayes have it. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to compensate the combined office of town clerk and tax collector and further, to raise and appropriate $29,500 plus usual benefits and mileage given to town employees, in lieu of all statutory fees. The salary should cover all duties associated with the combined office, and requires the office be open to the public at least 20 hours a week, till the town shall vote otherwise. Motion for, motion for that to be read? Motion, Rick Machino. And the second was? Francis, okay. Rick, would you spell me your last name, please, so I can write it down? Can you spell your last name for me, so I can write it down? Very good, thank you. Questions or comments on Article Four? Article Four, to see if the town will vote to compensate the combined office of town clerk, tax, and tax collector and further, to raise and appropriate $29,500 plus usual benefits and mileage given to town employees, in lieu of all statutory fees. This salary should cover all duties associated with the combined office, and requires the office being open to the public at least 20 hours a week, till the town shall vote otherwise. All in favor of Article Four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, the ayes have it. They'll get paid this year, though. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $39,900 for a full reevaluation of the properties, for agreement with Avatar Associates, with said monies to come from the reappraisal capital reserve fund, and nothing from general taxation. Select Board unanimously recommends this action. Motion, Article Five, is read. Motion, Kate Bailey, and a second?
Jennead, mask. Jennead.
Jennead, thank you, Jen. I don't, the mask really. Questions or comments on Article Five? Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $39,900 for a full reevaluation of properties per agreement with Avatar Associates, with said monies to come from the reappraisal capital reserve fund, and nothing from general taxation, Select Board unanimously recommends this action. All those in favor of Article Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed. Article Five is passed. Article Six. Ready to read this, and please, this is the floor, Highway and Streets. This is Paul, this is your bucket, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Probably going to have Paul answer some of the questions that will go with this, as long as everybody's okay with it. Are we good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $359,900 for highways and streets for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with the warrant. Motion, bring that to the floor, motion, Andy Lassner. And a second, from Brian Ueys. Questions on the highway budget? And Paul here is ready to take questions.
I wish to amend the warrant article.
Are you prepared for this?
Pretty much. The amended article will read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $289,700 for highways and streets for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with the warrant.
Do you have that copy? Okay, you have an amendment to deal with? Amendment reads. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $289,700 for highways and streets for the purposes detailed in the operating budget, with under warrant. This amendment is brought to the floor by Francis, I need a second on the amendment to bring it to discussion.
Second.
Second, from Michael, is it Levis, Mike?
Levis, L-E-V-I-F-S.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion on that? Please come up, state your name.
I will.
Okay.
I would just like to know where Mr. Muzzy's going to cut this money from?
Cut.
Will you vote on it?
Cut. Mr. Muzzy? Something you can't answer?
The reason I stepped up here was I was going to explain the fact that I have detailed accounts where I would cut to $70,200. But as you know, Mr. Moderator, the selectmen are free to cut as they see fit.
This is true. Um, we're always here, would you explain where your thoughts were? I think that's what Patty's asking for. You didn't explain to all of us.
We need to discuss your motion first.
All right, I have a detailed account somewhere here. There are new ones.
The ayes have it.
Any place to see a black mark on this paper? $500 in garage supplies, it doesn't seem like there needs to be $3,698 spent one year, when you only had an $1,800 budget, and then now you want $2,200, right? $500, for example. The John Deere grader shouldn't need much in the way of improvement. You paid $2,600 last year, asking for $5,000 this year. Oils and lubes, why up $7,000 in that account? That's one account only. The freight liner, International Truck, why is that up $3,000? He goes on, equipment rental mower, why up $4,000? This is time to cut the unnecessary things. You might like them, you might say, oh, I'd like mine roped side to cut, but that's not a priority when somebody can't pay the tax bill. Roped materials, here's a biggie. If you'd been to a meeting earlier, there was a warrant article lined there for $60,000 or $65,000. That was $20,000 more than last year, $25,000 more than last year. There's a long story on the budget that was used up this year, notice there was only $1,700 left in the budget. I told some people last year that there was anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 surplus in the budget from last year. There was, in fact, on December 1, after ridiculous spending, there was $40,000, $41,000, I was told, over, not expended, in the budget. By the end of that December, it had all been spent. Among other things, for example, you'll find out, and I have a paper here, I'm going to cut, uh, cord off the top of my head, if you want the details, I can provide right to the dime. $27,000 spent for a third road person. You authorized $40,000 for that third road person, but there was $13,000 left over. That budget shows that every bit of that $13,000 was spent somewhere else. And that's not good faith requisitions of money for a purpose. Those are just some of the errors, it totaled, it totaled $70,200.
That's the figure I have here. Thank you. Jennead, I think you'd like to speak, you look like you might. Wait patiently, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this isn't necessarily a question directed to Paul or the Highway Department, but I spent a lot of time with ease in advance, so I can be prepared. This is an example of my question. So Article Six calls for 359-9, right? When I go to the page 46, the Highway Department, into 47, the budget on the report is 488. I don't understand.
Okay.
I have a problem reconciling these. I don't understand them.
Let's see what we can do about, is that a Linda Franz question? This. You have a microphone?
Oh.
You'll wanna use it.
Um, the 488 includes Article Six and Article Eight. If you look under the column, it says warrant article. So, Six is the 359-9. And warrant is Article Eight.
Oh, you talk about the column, it says WA number.
Yeah, warrant after the number.
Oh, okay.
So you've gotta add in the other class to the new highway backhoe.
All right. Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. State's name, please.
I will. Can we ask Paul what he feels about all these numbers and why they're so much more than last year?
We certainly can.
Can we have him stand up and defend himself?
Yep. Uh, please, with the floor, realize Paul's not a resident, he's in the department head. Everybody good with him speaking?
Yeah.
Very good. Mr. Mansur. He's got one over there.
So Francis, I, um, I couldn't keep track of everything that you were asking about, but I will tell the town, um, I had $7,000 in my budget last year to fix our international truck. We ended up putting well over $30,000 into that truck, which was 400% more than I had in my budget. Um, there's one, um, big line item. I know you asked about the mowing. Um, the reason for the jump in that cost is because the company that I rent from, they are going out of business and I have to look for another company. And the cheapest I could find is $3,500 a week compared to what I used to pay at $55 an hour, which is about $2,000. Um, so that's a huge jump in price right there, too. Um, you said, uh, lube, oil, filters was a jump. That's the first time that's ever been in this, uh, a line item in the budget. Kate Bailey asked us to separate that from fuel, so I did that. Um, so that is a brand-new, uh, line item budget. So I don't know where you got your numbers for that last year, because it certainly wasn't in my budget. Uh, what's another one, Francis, that you wanted some information about?
There are so many, I only get on the iceberg piece. The third employee salary. Uh, no, I didn't get on that today, but I wanted to...
Uh, you gotta speak, you're up with the microphone. State your name.
Francis Muzzi, the question was, was I, uh, in the audience here, was I in favor of cutting the third person? The answer is yep, but that wasn't one of my thoughts. One of my briefs was the fact that you had $13,000 left over because it was only high from May to December, and yet you spent the other $13,000. That money should have been left over and never taxed and put into the next one for a reduced, uh, on the taxes, but no, and $41,000 left over in December. Spend it all. $1,700, if my memory is correct, in that last item there. That's all that's left over in the road agent budget. Never has the road agent budget been so overly spent, right down to the last penny. All road agent budgets have had, I'll call it surplus funds for emergency purposes, but oftentimes they have a frugality issue and they actually save some of the money for a later time to offset the taxes another year. It wasn't done here, and the selectmen are to blame for allowing it to happen.
Francis, that $13,000 went directly to the international truck and I needed another $10,000 on top of that to cover it.
Um, I believe Mr. Sheller would like to make a comment first, please.
Our budget, uh, that we're proposing this year is $27,000 less than the budget last year. We can nickel and dime this, we can break it into a number game, but if you look at the overall program we put together, that we budgeted to keep our roads maintained, our budget this year is less than it was last year. Jordan, would you like to...
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, you may.
Jordan Kano, again, our budget for this year is $27,000 approximate less than last year, so when you're subtracting another, what, $70,000 off of it, you're talking about close to $100,000 less to maintain the roads for this year. Do not vote for this, do not pass this, that is not a good idea, that is not gonna help your taxes, it's just, it's just not helpful. Dropping $100 grand out of a $350,000 budget is gonna be bad news for everyone in town and all the roads.
Thank you. Muzzi, one more comment?
Your numbers are lacking. I'm offering $70,000 off this budget. The $30,000 has already been taken, but remember, I said last year, there was about $50,000 to $100,000 of surplus funds there, but you came to this, a meeting and matched, hell-bent on spending every damn thing you could for the road budget. Now it's about time to take the mims on that matter and look at it in a more frugal manner. You talk about cutting and nickel and dimeing, you need to do it, if somebody else ain't gonna do it that actually executes the expenses, but you're gonna do it, you're responsible for it, selectman.
Thank you. Other comments, please? State your name.
Paul Davis. Um, I'm not in favor of cutting this down.
Okay.
Uh, I think Paul and the crew have done an excellent job. We've got a mile winner. Nobody knows what the next one is gonna be like. Um, obviously, anybody that, uh, is associated with a dirt road is gonna realize it's gonna be kind of gravel foot somewhere. Not necessarily where I live on, I live on the Cape part, but I'm very fortunate, but Davis, huh? Uh, schoolyard isn't any good. I mean, if that's any sign of what roads have, over and tee for. Um, I think that the budget should remain the same, I think the selectmen and Paul, I assume, have got together and they kinda sorta worked this budget together, I don't think there's undercut, overcut, I think it's basically what they need, I know for fact, uh, talking with Paul, uh, throughout the course of the winter, he had some serious problems, backhoe, dump truck, I just had to spend $3,000, am I right, Paul, something like that? Uh, put a radiator in just so he could run a few more weeks. I mean, all this stuff comes out of the highway department budget, they don't have a hat out there and say, "Town welfare, we need this," or go without. They have to get it, they have to get it on the road, and it's a priority. People don't understand that, evidently. So if you're under obligation to keep roads filed and maintained, something breaks, it's gotta get fixed. It's probably not the best idea to spend $500,000 for a wheel drum, however, I don't believe they do that. So I, I'd like to see the article, this motion defeated and put back on the floor so the real budget, per se, if that's what you wanna call it, gets put out. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step up and state your name.
Marina Bradley-Clett. So I'm also against the proposed amendment on the simple grounds that, um, as we finally get out of this state of pandemic, we're going to see increased utilization of roads. People need to drive to get to work in tough economic times. That is a simple reality, that the roads are a basic function of allowing anyone to participate in the economy. Money has been saved on the road budget over the last year, and therefore, all possible due diligence has been done by the select board, and I'm satisfied with the road agent's explanation of where the money left over at the end of the year went in terms of the repairs to the equipment that came in over budget. Sometimes repairs to equipment simply come in over budget, and that's the reality of things. Thank you.
Very much, thank you. Step up, state your name, please.
John Reed.
Thank you.
Um, you know, we've talked about this already, the international was a problem child. It came up for lease renewal time after time, I spoke against renewing the lease time after time, but as a town, we voted it back in to extend the lease. Obviously, it came home to roost and it cost us a lot of money at the end. The other problem is, is that we had a lot of equipment that, over the years, didn't see the maintenance and repair it should have, and it all came together at once. I am for defeating this motion. I think we should put the budget in place and come back next March and take a better look at it. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anybody have anything new to add? Wanna get ready to call the vote? Francis, I want your comment.
Keep neglecting to look at the fact that there was actually $41,000 out of December 1, mentioned at one of the selectmen's meetings, left over in this budget. Rather than use it in a manner that was designated by the town, to spend it. $13,000, correct me on that actual number if I am wrong, but $13,000 was either spent for road materials or winter sand. On that basis, then, there should be a $13,000 or less appropriation in the road materials or winter sand. There is no such diminishing in that thing, because they don't care to stay.
Okay, we're gonna call the vote.
Call one quickly.
Excuse, oh, I'm sorry, Paul. Yes, I didn't see you.
I just wanted to, uh, is it on now?
It's on now?
Yes.
So I wanted to respond to Francis's, he keeps saying $41,000 left over December 1. Francis, $6,000 went right to the international, uh, we had a DGR route in Cape, they went down on that right after the first December, there's $6,000. I brought in front of the select board to purchase $15,000 worth of gravel, um, for our roads, to have war and sand and gravel holdout for us, which we did, and it's gonna save us 50 cents a yard this year. I did not take that out of the budget, I'm still gonna ask for $45,000 in that budget, 'cause I have high expectations this year of myself and the guys at work down there, that I really would like to gravel Kate Moonshine Road, I'd like to gravel all Achiever Road, and I'd like to gravel all of Elsworth Hill Road. So I'm looking at purchasing, uh, about $18,000 to $20,000 worth of gravel, um, $18,000 to $20,000 yards of gravel, I'm sorry, not dollars. So that's, that's my explanation of where some of the money went for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Ever written requests, all legal, five names on it, with the undersigned, which have a secret paper ballot on all vote, all votes relative to Article Five, so we'll probably end up with two, one will be for the amendment, and I'm assuming we go back. Making sure everybody's here, Francis is still here, Undertuning is still here, Paul Davis is here, Michael Levis is here, Rachel Smith, are you still here? Oh, right back there, okay. Uh, this is gonna be a paper ballot, the people that have chosen not to wear masks will be the last ones to come through and cast your vote. Everybody lines up over here. We're gonna vote. This is voting on the amendment. You're voting on the amendment in the amount of 200 and... This is the amendment. Keep in mind, we're voting the amendment, guesses and fevers, I know it's against the...
I know. I'm waiting for everybody else to vote. I think they're doing their part. Yeah, so that's... But, but then he's also... Further, yes.
But I heard you did a fishing...
Yes, yes. All of our money gets spent outside of our home. We have like old, dilapidated, so you...
We, we have a change. We did, yeah. And I tried, you know, skilled gaps, I tried to make it a little smaller, but it's not up, yeah.
You think that has been cut down to seven thousand dollars out of the budget? They wouldn't have had to...
No, I don't think so.
You go down, you come down.
We're building two bridges that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Do we have a number?
I'll thank, I'll thank you. I think I made the planning board at night. Did I get a letter? I was running against this guy over later, too. Did I get a letter? Oh, what? I'll talk to you later. For planning awards? I thought you were listing the talent. For planning awards? Yeah. I gotta get the vote.
Everybody hold the votes, Tim. Okay, voting's close to the other side. The amendment for Article Six, which read, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred dollars for highway and streets for purposes detailed in the operating budget, the warrant." There were nine votes in favor. There were forty-six opposed. Amendment is defeated. Which puts us back. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred dollars for highway and streets for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with the warrant." Mr. Buzzy, do you still want a paper ballot on this? Please do. Excuse me, can you cover the microphone? I couldn't hear you. Go with the paper ballot. You would like to have a second paper ballot. Okay. Any questions? Any comments on this? Okay, this time. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred dollars for highway and streets for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with the warrant." A yes vote is in favor of the three-fifty-nine-nine, a no is opposed to it. Is everybody clear with that? All right, let's line up.
He's sounding up, though, with his nervousness, watching the news. We'll leave at home. So do I.
I would think when the weather approved, when the weather improved, the time to play sports.
Looking forward to next year. What's that?
Selling you on this, isn't it? Selling you on the job, is it?
Oh, yeah. Got a lot more jobs to run.
Even if you do, it doesn't matter.
You just gotta win over the jury, yes. Yes. I mean, if you do, you do what's right, I think.
Nope, their name goes unfounded.
Yeah.
Having fun here?
Mike, I'm sorry. You're still by Mike, right?
Yeah, well, legally it's Mike, but I don't really... I had, I did, I did...
Thank you, appreciate it.
You know, I like, I think what I've seen, I like it for you, but I wanted something younger.
I, I appreciate that, honestly. I, I like Karen both sides.
I gotta go. I'll be right back.
Um, I like a lot of your ideas. Been listening to you about the road. Not that I didn't, but just you listen more. I mean, I haven't called you out, but I know you're on bit of a... That was probably exciting.
I wanna say, I, I like that you said those are mighty correct. I really wanna try to...
Everybody vote!
I wanna hear.
Hey, voting's close!
You have to take the value of the most...
As you are.
Article Six, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred dollars for highway and streets for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with the warrant." Surprisingly, forty-six yes, nine no. Highway budget is passed. Can I read this? Bring it to the floor. I don't know what Paul or, I guess Paul speak on. Paul speak on this briefly. Paul speak on this briefly. Article seven. See if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a long-term lease slash purchase agreement in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars payable over a term of seven years for the purpose of purchasing a 2021 Western Star Class Seven six-wheel truck with a dump body, sander body, front plow, wing plow, and central hydraulics system and to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-eight thousand one hundred forty-one dollars. For the first year's payment for this purpose. A three-fifths ballot vote is required on this. Motion to accept it is read. All around the room. Hold on here. Let me write that down and pick a name. Sure. What about Jenny? That looks like a good one. And a second, who wants to see their name in print? Rick Bisham again. First person I saw. Paul, if you would speak to this, then we'll take questions and answers and things like that.
All right, um. So this last year, we put thirty thousand dollars into our international truck. Um, which seems a bit excessive. Um, two thousand nineteen, we put sixteen thousand dollars into the truck. Two thousand eighteen, the town put seventeen thousand dollars into the truck. That's three years. Um, then we put sixty-three thousand dollars in parts into this truck. Sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, and we are now starting to replace parts that we have already replaced when I first started here. And the parts are not cheap. They's, the parts are, every time you turn around, it's three thousand dollars, six thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars. It's either time to stop the bleeding or continue fixing this truck, which we already could have made almost three payments in the last three years with the money that we spent repairing it.
Anybody have any questions?
Jenny, thank you. Um, a couple of questions. We're not counting downtime in all this and the time repair. We're talking about six thousand dollar parts, right? Um, is there a value? Is there any value with the old truck? And what is your intention with that?
Um, we've been offered nine thousand dollars credited for that truck. And that's all. Um. Firstly, my personal opinion is we take the money and run. Uh, the truck has to be in operating condition, no lights on the dash, no oil leaks, no anything for them to give us that kind of money.
Good luck. So this is the lease. This is not reflecting the street value of the old one. So is that going to be a pickup to your budget?
Uh, this is, um, reflecting the, the one seventy-nine, two twenty-seven is reflecting the nine thousand dollars they are giving us.
Okay, thank you.
State your name.
Francis Muthie. This is not a speech in objection to the purchase of the vehicle. Okay? This is a speech in objection to trading the current vehicle for the new vehicle. Okay? When you trade a vehicle that you own, what you are given in trade is always countable. Long way to work. If you have a visit from somebody in town that wants to spend nine thousand dollars on that, which is what you've been offered, I'm all favor of the person in town getting the benefit, not some big trucking company. They should know what they're buying because I presume they know a hell of a lot more about trucks than I do. But nine thousand dollars given by the trucking company is a low ball. Because I want the selectmen to be forced to hang on and not trade the old vehicle. I am adding an amendment to this motion. And basically what it does, and I'm going to read it. It requires the selectmen to hang on to the old truck and sell outright to somebody who wants it. Do I need to just read the whole thing, Steve?
No, you can.
Uh, all it says add on is the selectmen shall keep the truck, this is to replace, and sell for a price to be determined.
Is there a second to the amended article? In the back room, Michael Osh. Thank you. Francis block first. Yes. So you're speaking to something here?
Yes, I'm speaking to the fact that, uh, this truck was evaluated. I remember, uh, watching a Zoom meeting by the select board. And there was three values given for this truck. Nine thousand is the trade-in, was the highest value that we received. I believe five thousand, six thousand. And basically, you were advised by other private parties to take the money and run. This truck has been a nemesis to this town for the past six years. This truck's had a blown engine, and if I remember correctly, at one point, and missed most of a winter plowing. Get away from this truck. I vehemently say, forget trying to sell it on the open market. Trading and be gone. Thank you.
You wish to speak? Sure, come up here.
Brian, I got Mike.
Brian, hold on a minute. Just, because you did such a good job getting there, too.
Go back a little.
Right, um, first of all, I have to say, we put together a committee of town residents to make a decision on this truck. Francis was present at, like, four out of the five meetings that we made and, uh, had our vote on this recommendation. The truck estimates on this international truck that came in, many of the, uh, prices were below nine. Unfortunately, that is the value on it. The reason that we chose to use the value of the truck on the trade-in is that the new truck that we get would, would have an automatic shift. Um. When we employ people in town, not everybody knows how to use a manual shift. And as time goes on, less and less people are going to be able to perform a manual shift. Uh, this allows having this truck used in the trade-in ensures that we get a, uh, an automatic truck that any employee can use. Uh, and improves the maneuver ability of the town for plowing and removing snow, et cetera. Um. We've researched this. Francis knows that we've researched it. This is the best value that we can get for that truck. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DuBois.
Yes, Brian DuBois up on that Wild Hill. I was also on that committee. And I heard all, all sides of it. Uh, and I just want to make a comment. If, in fact, this amendment was to pass, which I'm totally against, and the town has to hold that truck, what happens to the original amendment? We're going to come up with another, another nine thousand dollars to put towards that truck? Am I? Yeah, I'm not the smartest Paul in the box here, but.
I believe that was, I believe that was an affirmative answer to your question, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Stand up, speak your name.
Andrew Lazar. So I was also on that committee as well. Um, the, what I understand was brought to us, uh, not just by Paul, but other representatives from, I think, different truck manufacturers, that not just this specific truck, but this complete line of trucks are, are just, nobody wants to touch them. They're, it seems like they're almost like a lemon. I don't, I don't know if you can speak to that, maybe just a little bit, Paul? Do you know more about that?
I can, uh, briefly. So International put Navistar motor in these trucks. And, um, from about two thousand nine through two thousand seventeen. And International, being a huge company, it is on, on the verge of bankruptcy a couple of years ago because of these motors. Um, I personally could not sell this truck to anybody with good faith, honestly. Um. That's all I can talk about them over. There are no good.
Thank you. Yes. Up and speak, please.
Marina, I'd like to collect it. Um, so I have one, um, critical question. Well, actually, this can, I just had to read in. Um, are all of our current employees of the town capable of using the current vehicle with the manual transmission?
Yes, we are. All three of us can drive it.
All right. So. I believe that the trade-in is appropriate. The nine thousand dollars is all we're going to get. But I question the, um, rationale behind, um, the requirement for an automatic transi- transmission. While automatic transmissions have begun to increase in number in commercial vehicles, for the most part, the great majority of trucks that are operated with a CDO still have a manual transmission. And confidence and proficiency in the operation of mechanical equipment is one of the things that we pay the employees of the town for. Um, therefore, I would like to, um, propose an amendment.
Got to deal with one at a time.
Understood. Very well done.
Thank you.
John, need to marry this point. Uh, I have leased commercial vehicles. And as of about five years ago, it actually costs more to specify a manual transmission than an automatic. And in a lease situation, at the end of the lease, um, the vehicle's worth less because everybody wants an automatic transmission. So if we're going to lease this vehicle, which is what's being proposed, then I'd stay with the automatic transmission.
Thank you.
Renee Sullivan. Um, I'd like to speak to the validity of the amendment. Um, I don't believe it was specific enough. Doesn't it have to reference what the actual cost would be in the amended article? Uh, if we did, hold on to the truck.
Well, I think what we need to do. This thing's going to take a three-fifths bell. It's going to have to be a paper bell. The amendment's going to have to be a paper bell. So. I think what we're going to end up doing, yes.
I'm questioning whether the amendment itself is valid because it was not presented correctly with the changed amounts in it. I know in the past, we've been required to do that for other articles.
Hmm.
This is point of order.
It is. Give me a minute. In my opinion, and that's all this is. I think we can go with his amendment. I think then we would have to amend the article a second time because this first payment, I'm assuming, is based on the nine thousand dollar trade-in. Is that correct? So we would have to appropriate another nine thousand dollars. Is that correct? And I'm asking because I'm not sure.
May I speak, Mr. Martin?
I'm going to actually have Linda try to answer that question, then you can speak.
Yes, we would have to appropriate another nine thousand. Um. Also, the, the warrant article itself would have to be totally changed because that raises the price up nine thousand and the, um, the seven-year lease payment would also.
Right.
So. But I, I really think that it's an invalid amendment, in my opinion.
I'm sorry?
Can you re-read the amendment, please?
I can. This is how the amendment that we would vote on reads. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a long-term lease purchase agreement in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars payable over a term of seven years for the purposes of purchasing a 2021 Western Star Class Seven six-wheel truck with a dump body, sander body, front plow, wing plow, and a central hydraulic system. To raise appropriate the sum of twenty-eight thousand one hundred forty-one dollars for the purpose, for the first year's payment for this purpose. The selectmen shall keep the truck. This is to replace, this, you, the selectmen shall keep the truck, this is to replace, and sell for a price to be determined. That is how that amendment would read. Um.
But is it changing the intent? Because then here, there's nothing about the other truck.
It doesn't say anything about trading it either, but.
Right, so it's changing the intent of the article.
No, you're not changing the intent of the article because the intent of this article is to buy another truck. Or to lease another truck. It's to make payments on it. So we're not changing the intent of the article. I also feel, contrary to some of the other people in this room, believe this is a valid amendment. And I would let it go. And I think that that's it. Yes, Mr. Ames.
Make a motion to move on the amended article?
I was standing here and asked to speak first.
He was, he was standing there. We'll let him speak. After that, I think we're going to move to a vote. Yes, sir.
Keep in mind that my objection is not to purchase the truck or anything like it. I have seen the contract. The selectmen showed me a contract. There was nothing mentioned in the contract about any trade. Furthermore, one of the reasons to not trade this is because by getting nine thousand dollars in hand, it may seem like pennies, but it increases cash flow. It goes into the general fund and helps cash flow. Whereas if you trade, you don't get your nine thousand dollars back for seven years. It, nine, divided nine thousand by seven, you get approximately thirteen hundred. That's your savings on the principal if it is involved this year. That's not worth it. Because in seven years, each one of those thirteen hundred dollars goes down in value. You know that from inflation. It's better to take nine thousand in hand right now and then buy the truck. I also suggested, if you're going to get nine thousand dollars, let me take nine thousand dollars off the first payment. That way I get instant money in hand for a truck I gave away that I own. That was my suggestion.
All right, thank you. Raina, you were actually standing in line. My sister saw you before I saw Jeff, so I'd like you to speak, please.
Thank you, Marina, I'd like. Um, one comment about this is that because nothing about the terms of the agreement are being stated in the warrant article in terms of the trade-in, I believe that if this amendment passes, we do not need a second amendment. However, what it would result in if the article is adopted is that the select board would be required to find a lease that conforms with the financial terms that have been appropriated. I.e., they must find a lease on a truck that is, uh, nine thousand dollars cheaper. Whether or not that is possible is not a actual, uh, matter that is contained within the article or the amendment. So if the amendment passes, then the amount you see is the amount you get. It doesn't invalidate the article or forces the select board to go back and find another vehicle, assuming that is possible. And my understanding is that it is likely not. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, got a call to vote. This is a vote on the amendment. Okay, we're all good on that. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a long-term lease purchase agreement in the amount of one hundred and nine, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars payable over a term of seven years for the purchase for the purpose of purchasing the 2021 Western Star Class Seven six-wheel truck, the dump body, sander body, front plow, wing plow, central hydraulics, and raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-eight one forty. Selectmen shall keep this truck. This is to replace, the sum of a price to be determined. Three fifths ballot. A yes vote is in favor of the amendment, a no vote is opposed.
I got battery holders in my office, son. Well, I can't handle this.
Well, I've been in the office.
I'm on order.
I would hope this could be on page one. I just have to bring that one tomorrow.
Which is your commitment?
I'm going to tomorrow.
We don't want a standard-day truck. We just want a standard-day, standard-day pickup. It just didn't work. And we burned it at the highway ourselves.
Buy the nine, sell the ten, you still make some money.
Yeah.
Down right there.
So this is who I committed against.
He never got his.
That never got his.
The second one, I didn't feel very happy. I had the next day off. I was so happy, I did. I made it to the end of the month. It was really bad enough that if I had to do something, I put up, but it was a good excuse. You know? Yeah. Great job, you guys. First shot, which spent most time with the doctor, said, well, probably excellent. But then you had a second one, and it's fine.
Hey, what? Did everybody vote? Okay, one's close.
The amendment, which basically dealt with the selectmen, would keep the truck, to sell and replace. There were nine votes in favor of doing that, there were 48 against, amendment was defeated. So that puts us back to the original article. I'm going to have to have you come back through and do a paper ballot again. Sorry. Let's do some other discussion. Article seven. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a long-term lease purchase agreement in the amount of $179,227 payable over a term of seven years for the purposes of purchasing a 2021 Western Star Class VII six-wheel truck with a dump body, standard body, front plow, wing plow, a central hydraulic system, and the raise appropriate to sum up $28,141 for the first year's payment for this purpose. The three-fifths vote is required." A yes is in favor of this, a no is against. I'm sorry, folks, but we're going to have to do one more paper ballot on it.
It's not like we're going anywhere.
The money's there.
That's how we got the door.
He graduated with a C-bump.
Season passes.
Anybody else? Okay? Okay. Article seven. Results, fifty-three in favor, three opposed. Article seven is passed. Article eight. See if the town will vote to purchase a John Deere three-ten SL HL backhoe for the sum of one-hundred-twenty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. Money will come out of the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund and nothing from general taxation. Select Board unanimously recommends this action. Motion bring this to the floor? Motion? Oh, let's pick somebody new. John Deere, that looks good. In a second, just somebody throw a hand up, for God's sakes, there we go. Oh, Kevin May, goodness, okay. Paul, would you care to bring the people up to speed on this real quick?
Sure, once again, this truck's better, this backhoe has been probably neglected as the truck has been a little bit. Just bringing up the speed, because last year we did put, I think we just over fourteen thousand dollars putting into this truck, and I had budgeted four thousand dollars, I mean in the backhoe, and I had budgeted four thousand. Two thousand nineteen, we put five thousand into it, not a big deal, but in two thousand eighteen, the town put thirty-six thousand dollars into this backhoe. You put a new transmission in it, you put a new front end in it. So, once again, we're pushing sixty thousand dollars in a three-year time scale, which absolutely is crazy to me, I just, it's crazy. At this point, I highly suggest that the town move forward with a new backhoe. I have a bad feeling, this machine definitely needs some work still, but it's running, and we've been babying it. And it has ninety-five hundred hours on it, and it is eleven years old.
Thank you. Yes, please step up.
Is this John Deere, is this machine being traded in as well, or what has happened to this machine?
So, we have talked, myself and the select board have talked. At this point, there is no trade-in going. I had asked, I thought it would be a good idea, and the selectmen agreed with me, that we could use it as a yard machine, loading salt, so we don't have to maybe get our new one all putted with salt and corroded. Also, if we are happening to be working on the south end of town, we can stockpile material at our shop, and it would save us going to war in sand and gravel, if we have a machine there to load material. But it's completely up to the town, I believe, at that point, to trade it or just keep it. I mean, we put fourteen thousand dollars into it this year, and I hate to see us getting traded in of ten thousand dollars, because that's what paid off for us.
The only point that I will bring to that, Paul, is the fact is you're still not having to maintain this machine. Obviously, right now, it probably has still, even though it's got an immense amount of hours, eleven thousand hours. Is that the original engine, or have the engine been replaced?
It is the original engine.
So, we've got a real pretty worn-out machine. Do you have any concept of what the value is of the machine now?
John Deere had offered us ten thousand dollars trade-in, and we had talked about it. And by putting the money the town has put into it, to take that money at this point is kind of, why not just keep it for a yard machine, and maybe we'll put fifty or sixty hours a year on it, maybe it'll last around the yard another five, six, eight years. If the motor happens to blow, then I guess you're scrapping to steal, I don't know.
Well, but at that point, if they take something that's worth ten thousand and it's worth nothing, and the other thing I've always come about, a machine that's left dormant comes apart pretty quickly. So, that's my income. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, step right up there.
Paul Davis. I'm in favor, that's what I like to step up for, I'd like to see that machine left in town. It's been, I don't know how many times, that that machine has had to travel back and forth. We lucked out a couple times, one of the mills allowed us to use a small hoe and load it to base for load trucks. I think it's a great idea to keep it in there, and I'd like, the other thing I'd like to point out, the town has an equipment trailer. And I'd like to see that being utilized, well, utilized, because I don't know if that trailer's ever left the yard. Somebody made, seen it on the backhoe tractor, whatever you want to call it, on equipment trailer. I have not. Not that I keep it, I usually do it on what the highway crew does, because I don't. But I know for a fact that if it's moved today, moved very often, the tire tracks are still sitting right here where I've been, so. If we do, vote, which I hope we do, get a new backhoe, I'd like also to make a recommendation, if possible, to the selectmen, saying, if we're gonna cap the thing from Kate Moosechand Road to South Wimber, say, let's put it on a trailer, that's where the hours come from. Paul, have to move that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to comment? Yes, sir. State your name.
My name is Tony Steller. At the five meetings we had in the equipment, it was elected, and many of the people that were on the equipment committee are in this room now, who realized we were gonna try and keep the backhoe and use it in the yard for loading, and then to use it in the dump. Not the dump, the transfer station, right? So, by keeping that backhoe for use in a contained area, we prolong the life of this. I agree, if it goes down, it goes down, that's it. But I think there's more use that we can wean out of this, and to put a lot of money into repairs. And that was the vote of the whole committee on this, was to keep the backhoe and use it as a backup in case there were some other issues with the new one we've got in town. For emergencies, thank you.
Very good. Anybody else? Step up, state your name, please.
Francis Muzzi. And after those meetings, I don't recall we ever made a final decision on what you were going to do with these machines. That's the reason for my amendments here. I asked Adam to get the board to make a commitment that they would keep and use this old backhoe. And he returns to do it. As a consequence, I have an amendment. The selectmen shall keep the vehicle, this is to replace and use or sell, has to be determined by the selectmen. The intent of that is not to take it and trade. I think that's what they just, if they put it in the motion, that combines their, that lines their hands. And that's what I intend to do.
Okey-dokey. Have an amendment? The amendment now reads, first off, do we want to have this as a secret paper ballot?
No.
No, but I appreciate all of you, I have Francis.
Time out, there was a signature on that paper there, it has five signatures for a paper ballot.
And are you still requesting that?
I am, unless they will make a determination.
Go to the microphone.
Up to the microphone, Francis. I'm trying to get there.
I ask for a commitment that they would hang on to this backhoe, they would not make a commitment. Therefore, I'm asking for a paper ballot. I will talk to the individuals that sign with me if they will make a commitment at this meeting and have it recorded by the secretary.
And guess what I'm asking about? You have this amendment, okay? And you've requested a paper ballot. I can do this amendment on a voice vote, and you don't need a paper ballot. If you're completely committed to being paper ballot, which I'm fine with, that would mean a paper ballot on just the amendment. I wish you also, as you've written here, on all those relative to either the late, that would be two more paper ballots, is that still your wish?
That would be my wish, if I can't make a commitment to hang on to this until sometimes it's no longer.
Well, it's either, we're either gonna do a paper ballot or not, so.
Make an amendment, do a way of amendment?
Just, no, you can't. Do I have a commitment? Hold on a minute, Jordan would like to speak, I'm assuming too, thus.
I get this to work. Jordan King. Your amendment is to do exactly what we're planning to do.
Then make that commitment, make that commitment.
I'm telling you right now, just like we did in all the previous selectman meetings, which there was multiple, is the plan is to keep this backhoe for emergencies and for use around the transfer station and the highway garage, and as long as it makes sense to do that, that's what we're going to do.
Can that be recorded?
If the motor blows in a year or two, and it makes more sense to get rid of it, then that's what we're gonna do.
Can that be recorded in the minutes of this meeting?
I'm one of three, but that's my opinion.
I believe it's been recorded of that.
Is that still going, Andrew?
All right, everybody one at a time.
So this is your command. I will speak to the individuals that requested a paper ballot and try to expedite this.
Okay, would you like to, so you know who it is?
I think I do.
Okay. While he's doing that, would you like to speak, please?
I would like to remind everyone that mechanical equipment operates best when it is exercised. An equipment that is designed for industrial service is meant to be operated on a regular basis, performing that service, when it sits and is rarely operated for the stated fifty to sixty hours a year. The hydraulic fluid, the oil, the other fluids that maintain the engine and the operating systems will start to deteriorate simply sitting out in the environment. Seals, starters, and other equipment will fail, and this equipment will not operate properly. And then the temptation will be, when it fails within one year, or sitting around as a yard dog, that we spend money on it, and we'll have lost the ten thousand dollars in question. Therefore, whatever happens with this amendment, after it, I will bring a second amendment requiring the select board to trade it in for the ten thousand dollars. It is not sound fiscal policy for us to throw away ten thousand dollars in hand for something that is a technologically dubious investment in the form of maintaining an already shot piece of equipment, that we've spent something like sixty thousand dollars on repairing in the past few years, that is out of its service life, that has a little more than eleven thousand hours on it, and essentially could fail at any time. Therefore, I believe absolutely that this equipment must be traded in, that ten thousand dollars for the town is better than, frankly, us getting about five hundred dollars worth of work out of it before it permanently fails. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muzzi, up to the microphone, assuming you have something to offer.
It has been agreed with the commitment that was made to take our names off the request to take it out.
Okay, very good, thank you. Yes, Jordan Kierke, up.
So, again, I would urge the town to keep this backhoe. It's not just for the transfer station and for loading some sand occasionally. We have fifty-eight miles of road, and Warren has sixteen or eighteen. If we have emergencies, like in 2017, we had a storm that wiped out two bridges, the highway department was everywhere, all through town. At least once a year, we have some type of major event on some road somewhere, and having this as a backup for an emergency is worth it. In one major storm, if you have to hire in emergency subcontractors to come in instead of repairing roads, you'll spend ten thousand dollars in one storm. So, if we can get a few years out of it, a couple grand a year to have for emergencies, for a hurricane, washouts, bridges out, whatever, it's worth it, it's worth keeping. We can keep it for a while longer, and it'll pay for itself.
There are no points of information, if you have something to say, you're up at the microphone, then you're behind her at this point.
To counter that, I would simply say that a piece of equipment that is to be used in an emergency situation is something that must reliably start on demand in an emergency. But to come up with a plan for an emergency that relies on a yard dog that is already shot for eleven thousand hours on it and has incurred sixty thousand dollars in maintenance within the past five years is not a plan for emergency at all. Where I work, I have a supposed backup twenty-ton refrigeration chiller that has shaft play five times the accepted value on it. People have proposed starting it before, when we've had our main fifty-six ton down for repairs. You don't start something that has shaft play five times out of toll. It's the same thing in this principle right here. A backup unit has to be properly maintained for it to have value. So essentially, again, we're wasting the ten thousand dollars we took gift for it to essentially say, all right, in an emergency situation, it's not that we have two backhoes, it's that we have one backhoe and one lottery ticket. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to keep up, Mr. Muzzi, speak real quick? Thank you.
I have conferred, and they're willing to take their names off the request for a paper ballot.
Okay.
If there is no second, or if the second is willing to withdraw the second, I will remove my motion for the amendment as well.
Don't actually know whose second it is, to be honest with you. I don't think anybody's second is a gap.
In that case, I request it removed.
Okay. Okay, who's the name?
John Deere, Jordan and Paul, the only thing I ask is, is that if you start putting in more than fifty percent of the ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, it should go down the road. If it starts really, I mean, we're leaving this up to you, it appears, and I'm just saying is, is that if all of a sudden your maintenance and repair budget, and it's very easy to do, if it's only four or five thousand, oh, let's put it in, it's a slippery slope, you'll get sucked into that machine. Eleven thousand hours is way too much time, that's why I said, well, yeah.
It's got ninety-five hundred hours, it's eleven years old.
Eleven years old, sure.
Yeah, it's okay. And I don't think it's even worth trading, I'll be honest, if we were going to get rid of it, I would think that we'd sell it outright and try to get a little more than ten thousand dollars, but I don't really know how much it's worth. So, I don't think we should trade it, for sure.
The only thing is, is don't get sucked into putting all sorts of, let's not be here in two years and find out
Let's, let's not be here in two years and find out that you spent $10,000 on a $10,000 machine. Thank you.
Yes?
Yes, um, this is on?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, I just want to say, with regard to the maintenance of, of our highway equipment...
Sir?
Yes?
If you put your mask up, please, like I've had everybody else. Thank you.
Sorry.
No?
Um, the road agent does a very good job of keeping the select board advised. He gives us daily reports. And one of the things that I notice is maintenance of the vehicles. And he also keeps a log down at the highway department of the maintenance that he keeps on the vehicles. Does a great job of, of, you know, servicing and changing the oils and greasing and all that, that does so. You know, my, my understanding is the, the select board, you know, has decided that they're gonna keep that. And, you know, the, the road agent does maintain these vehicles very well. And, and I'm looking that this is, from my point of view, uh, it's, it's, it's something that's gonna be in the best interest of the town. Keep that second, that, to keep that old backup as a backup. And, uh, I wasn't gonna say anything today, but I did. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Yes?
Just to clarify, at this point, we are not holding any vote on an amendment on...
We are not, um, the amendment that Mr. Muzzi had requested, everybody's withdrawn. But if you would like to make a second, or if you would like to make an amendment, I need your amendment. I need it in writing. We'll have the second, and we'll discuss it.
Alright, so I understand that, um, at this point, um, ignoring for a moment the trading value, that the current intent of the selectmen is to, um, keep this backup. Um, at this point, because there are no amendments, however, I want to be clear that the select board does have the flexibility to sell it on the open market if the road agents suggest that they bring us more than $10,000, should they make the decision that this would be more cost-effective. You do have that flexibility at the moment, do you not, sir? Fair enough that I will not bring an amendment. Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else?
May I come over to you and vote on the article?
Well, we're just getting ready to, young fellow.
Thank you.
Article 8, to see if the town will vote to purchase a John Deere 310 SLHL backup for the sum of $128,942 and zero cents. Monies will come out of the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund and nothing from general taxation. Select Board unanimously recommends this action. All those in favor of Article 8, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those that are opposed, leave the ayes up. We'll go through a few more, and then I'm going to take a break. Yes, there you are. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,500 for the planning board in connection with its activities, for such purposes and such uses as deemed necessary by said planning board. Motion to accept that is read. All around the room, about, about Maria Roderickola? And a second, somebody throw a hand up for me, sure. About Tracy Currie this time. Everybody wants the name in print. Discussion?
Maria Roderickola, um, as the chairwoman of the planning board, I'd like to say a few words about the budget. So this year is the second year that we've requested, um, essentially an additional $5,000 for continuing what is called a town master plan. This is something that is required under, um, state law. We've actually not been in compliance with that for approximately the past, um, 33 years, since the last one was completed in the 1980s. Uh, the planning board declared the all of due diligence on this. We went with, um, the same vendor that supplied the town's, um, emergency response plan, and she delivered a price that was less than 50% of that that was provided to us by the North Country Council, which of course claims that they exist to, um, support towns in the North Country. But actually, we were able to get this, um, master plan serviced for $15,000 instead of about an average of around 35 from, uh, the more typical vendors that we went for. She's done excellent work on the town emergency response plan, so we are very satisfied with going forward this way. In exercising this, um, what I would call sober discretion with funding, we've also been able to come up with a fund structure that spreads the cost of the master plan across three years. So this is year number two. There will be one more year at which we request, um, $5,000 for this activity, for a total of $15,000, at which point, um, it will be concluded. And at this time, we are preparing a list of questions for the survey, which is an integral part of the master planning process that will go out. The whole rationale behind the master plan is that it actually integrates, um, the information from the town's residents in how, what they want to see the town look like in the future, what they, it matters to them in the town, so that for the purposes of planning and maintaining essentially our current culture when it comes to land use and network, that we actually are responding to the intent and wishes of the townspeople, um, rather than simply making it off as we go. Um, and this is important for us because lately we've had an increase in legal fees, um, with, associated with, um, the planning board with disputes over land, and we'd like to preempt that. Um, certainly, we also have, uh, what I recall, the fundamental balance from the town of Homewood is between, um, you know, the right of people to do what they please with their land, and the fact that most people come here to have a rural climate. And, um, our desire is to avoid as much tension between those as possible. So I'd ask you all to support this $6,500, um, so that we can actually, um, successfully move forward with the master plan and incorporate everyone's input. And we'll be meeting in person on April 5th. And I would encourage those who want to be involved in the, um, master planning process to attend at 6:30, um, in the town offices to the planning board meeting, um, to continue those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Article 9, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,500 for the planning board in connection with its activities, for such purposes and such uses as deemed necessary by said planning board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that are opposed, ayes have it. Article 10, I'll read this, ask Chief Haynes to make a quick statement, then he'll take questions. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $44,250 for maintenance of the fire department for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with a warrant, which $1,000 is to come from the unassigned fund balance and the balance of $43,250 to come from general taxation. Motion to accept is read. All sorts of people love that. Motion, that's all these are. How about that? Okay. And a second, sure, RPC in the back of the room, Roland D. Terracotta, good luck, pal. Sure, okay. Chief Haynes, you can make a quick statement about the department?
Sure.
I know you love to talk on the microphone.
This year, or this past year, we've seen a lot of changes to the voting and all that. Um, we want to thank everybody that has come to us and made donations, uh, and helped us in those manners, and it was overwhelming for the amount of people that had come to give us support in that manner, including, in order to keep it coming with extra face masks and rubber gloves and all of those types of items. So we want to say thank you for that, to, to everybody involved.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $44,250 for the maintenance of the fire department for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with a warrant, which $1,000 is to come from the unassigned fund balance. The balance of $43,250 comes from general taxation. All in favor of Article 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that are opposed, the ayes have it. Article 11, see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to continue with the seventh year of the seven-year lease agreement for the purpose of leasing the 2014 Freightliner Dump Plow Truck for the highway department. Raise and appropriate the sum of $24,680 for said seventh and finally year payment to that purpose. The lease agreement contains an escaped clause. Motion to bring that to the floor, motion, Francis Muzzi, a second from Sonia Sheller. Questions or comments, they change. Francis Muzzi, it was recognized in the course of the discussion of the purchase of the new truck that there already was a payment being made of $25,000 roughly on the old truck. To compensate for that, it was suggested, and as you will notice in the next article, the $25,000 that is conventionally put into the, um, equipment fund have been eliminated for this one year. Yes, thank you. Yes, please.
Um, Maria Roderickola, um, just to clarify, we are in fact, at this point, going to own this piece of equipment. Free and clear at the end of this, um, seven-year lease agreement?
Yes, we are. Looking at the board, Agent.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Questions or comments? Article 11, see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to continue with the seventh year of the seven-year lease agreement for the purpose of leasing a 2014 Freightliner Dump Slice Plow Truck for the highway department. Raise and appropriate the sum of $24,680 for said seventh and finally year payment to that purpose. This contains an escaped clause. All in favor of Article 11, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that are opposed, the ayes have it. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $139,100 to be placed in the following expendable trust funds and capital reserve funds to come from 2021 general taxation. The select board unanimously recommends this action. Does everybody have these amounts in front of them? If you do, I'm not going to drum my way through them. Motion to bring this to the floor? Motion, very solid this time. One second, somebody throw a hand. It looks like Joyce Tenell in the back. I'll put your name in print. Joyce Tenell. Questions or comments? Don't everybody jump up at once. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $139,100 to be placed in the following expendable trust capital reserve funds and capital reserve funds to come from 2021 general taxation. Select Board unanimously recommends this action. All in favor of Article 12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that are opposed, the ayes have it. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $80,500 for the purpose of disposal and hauling of solid waste and cost of maintenance for the town transfer station. Set amount to come from general taxation. Motion, bring this to the floor? Got to bring it to the floor, okay. Uh, SuJett? And a second, uh, Morgan Currier. Questions or comments or discussion? Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $80,500 for the, for the purpose of disposal and hauling of solid waste and cost of maintenance for the town transfer station, set amount to come from general taxation. All in favor of Article 13, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those that are opposed, Article 13 is passed. Article 14, this will be a paper ballot? Because it called, well, you all trust me counting. I don't have to. But it does call for a ballot vote here. I did not write the articles. So that, I would say, makes it that we're gonna do a paper ballot. That's what it says, so... Article, excuse me? Article 14, to see if the town will vote to expand the purpose of the transfer station recycling expendable trust fund to include purchasing or repairing transfer station equipment. And to appoint the select board's agents to expand the fund, a two-thirds ballot, ballot vote is required. Motion to accept that is read, or bring it to the floor? Motion, Francis Muzzi? And a second from somebody, sure, pretty well, should put me near here. Questions or comments?
Jenny, quick question. Do you have, um, equipment in mind to buy with these funds? Or is this just, is this just changing a nuance, so you have that avail of, eh, ability in the future?
Ability in the future was the answer.
I miss the recycling, that's what I'm asking.
You are, you are on before, Linda.
You were on before.
We're changing the purpose of the fund from recycling, because we do not do recycling, to include, um, repairing or purchasing of equipment. I understand that the, um, trash compactor might need to be, it's very old, the big, the big...
The splinter thing?
Yes, um, may need to be repaired or replaced in the future. I mean, this is just a change in the fund, and to give the select board authorization to withdraw from the fund, should we have an emergency?
Oh, I see, so this was dedicated to recycling, and this is just gonna change, this will change...
This is just changing the purpose. And that is why, uh, also the two-thirds ballot vote is required, um, by the Department of Revenue when you're changing the purpose of, uh, capital reserve.
Yeah, exactly, okay. Thanks, Linda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Roderickola, um, so just to clarify on that, it is a specifically different, um, requirement in the revised code, which requires us to have a two-thirds vote for this one when the previous ballot measure that was voted on was a three-fifths. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
Just have a question, um, in terms of, so I know currently not recycling, and I know the reason was because it was too expensive. Um, but does this, this move mean that we have no plans of, of considering recycling in the future or looking into, to doing that? Is that kind of just, let's get rid of recycling and go with the transfer?
I can take a little bit of a shot at this, only because if you read the wording on this carefully, it says to expand the purpose to include purchasing or repairs. So it doesn't say that we're doing away with the recycling part of it. Don't know if they plan to do anything in the future, but, yep. Somebody take a shot at that? Randy? You're being dug out back there, bud. Come on up, Randy. Oh, no, Joe, I bet Joe will give you the microphone in a heartbeat. State your name, sir.
Randy Bruger.
Thank you.
And yes, at some point, we are, we would like to try to get into recycling. We've just got to work with it, because it's expensive to get the building and get the equipment. just got to work with it because it's expensive to get the building and get the equipment. But if you could get it. Okay, yeah, thanks, thank you.
Yes, I, you know, actually, the way I read this, it's so that we could open up the normal, uh, recycling, not recycling, but basically the normal, uh, transfer station repairs and eat away at the recycling budget. This thing was earmarked for recycling so that we could start doing cardboard or what have you. We're about to decrease the amount by repairing other equipment within the transfer station. So I think this is actually against recycling. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, gonna have to be a paper ballot. We all know the girl, lineup over there, young masked people will go through last. Your plan is two-thirds.
Hi, Mom.
Grab it.
I don't know if you started, remember, my, my family is the only one that I can call me.
Now that we know that.
Call me whatever you want.
Now that we know that, Andy.
Don't worry, don't worry.
Andy.
Stick it to the end.
That's our K S S D.
No, no, never call me Drew.
Article 14. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $102,356 for the maintenance of the police department for the ensuing year for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted in the warrant. Please note that $11,450 will be funded by the Police Revolving Fund and the balance of $90,906 is to come from general taxation. Motion to bring that to the floor?
Thank you.
Motion. How about Paul Davis? On the second floor, Skerritt Cady. Chief, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, so for those of you that don't know me, my name is Wallace Tard, and I'm the chief of police for six years now. So every year I sit here for about two hours and a half hoping and praying that you're all still with a good mood by the time you get to me. I just want to point out two things if I can. On page 46, if you look at the expenditures for my budget, there's actually a typographical error here. It says that I spent over 110.41% of my budget. That's actually 10.41%? If it was 110, I would hope you would all vote to remove me as your chief and we would not ask for a paper ballot. So my budget actually has been flatlined. I have increased it not at all from last year. The only difference in the bottom line is what we would be showing you as income coming in from the special track detail, NOH RV detail, or any other income that we would generate through a detail from the police department. So no changes in the budget, it's been flatlined since last year. If you have any questions about it, please feel free to ask me.
Thank you, Chief. Questions or comments up to the microphone, please. Going once. Article 15, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $102,356 for the maintenance of the police department for the ensuing year for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with the warrant. Please note that $11,450 will be funded by the Police Revolving Fund and the balance of $90,906 is to come from general taxation. Motion to bring that to the floor?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Questions or comments? Yes?
Cindy, I'd ask on behalf of someone else to ask for a quick overview of this because I'm the biggest mouth in the room, right? But do we have a dog officer? I don't know what's in... Can you explain briefly what's in this budget? I couldn't answer at all. Thank you.
Yep, we will get an explanation for it.
I can give the explanation. Apparently this select board would like me to do that and if everyone's okay with that. Yes, actually in my police report, I took the liberty of recognizing our last animal control officer who was down at the end of this past year, Mr. Godfrey from Piermont. He was replaced with a Wentworth resident. His name is William Malanson. William Malanson is a Wentworth resident and also a former police officer, so he is familiar with statutes governing dog and animal laws of RSA's in the state. So yes, you do actually have a new animal control officer. He has been completely outfitted with some new equipment even and works with the police department regarding the ordinances and statutes governing the animal laws in Wentworth.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Yes, sir, step right up.
Andrew Lasser, just want to let everybody know that Animal Control Officer did get interviewed at one of the select board meetings, I think possibly the last one or the one before, two before. That is all on YouTube and it's recorded, so if you want to check that out, there's some information on there. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Anybody else? Article 16, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,02,356 for the maintenance of the police department for the ensuing year for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted in the warrant. Please note that $11,450 will be funded by the Police Revolving Fund and the balance of $90,906 is to come from general taxation. Motion to bring that to the floor?
Thank you, officer.
Motion. How about Paul Davis? On the second floor, Skerritt Cady. Chief, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, so for those of you that don't know me, my name is Wallace Tard, and I'm the chief of police for six years now. So every year I sit here for about two hours and a half hoping and praying that you're all still with a good mood by the time you get to me. I just want to point out two things if I can. On page 46, if you look at the expenditures for my budget, there's actually a typographical error here. It says that I spent over 110.41% of my budget. That's actually 10.41%? If it was 110, I would hope you would all vote to remove me as your chief and we would not ask for a paper ballot. So my budget actually has been flatlined. I have increased it not at all from last year. The only difference in the bottom line is what we would be showing you as income coming in from the special track detail, NOH RV detail, or any other income that we would generate through a detail from the police department. So no changes in the budget, it's been flatlined since last year. If you have any questions about it, please feel free to ask me.
Thank you, Chief. Questions or comments up to the microphone, please. Going once. Article 15, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $102,356 for the maintenance of the police department for the ensuing year for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with the warrant. Please note that $11,450 will be funded by the Police Revolving Fund and the balance of $90,906 is to come from general taxation. All in favor of Article 15? Signify by saying aye. Those who are opposed? Article 15 is passed. Article 16. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,000 for the expenses associated with animal and pest control. Motion to bring this to the floor? Motion, Andy Lasser. Motion, Andy Lasser. On the second floor, Skerritt Cady. Questions, comments? Questions? Yes?
Cindy, I'd ask on behalf of someone else to ask for a quick overview of this because I'm the biggest mouth in the room, right? But do we have a dog officer? I don't know what's in... Can you explain briefly what's in this budget? I couldn't answer at all. Thank you.
Yep, we will get an explanation for it.
I can give the explanation. Apparently this select board would like me to do that and if everyone's okay with that. Yes, actually in my police report, I took the liberty of recognizing our last animal control officer who was down at the end of this past year, Mr. Godfrey from Piermont. He was replaced with a Wentworth resident. His name is William Malanson. William Malanson is a Wentworth resident and also a former police officer, so he is familiar with statutes governing dog and animal laws of RSA's in the state. So yes, you do actually have a new animal control officer. He has been completely outfitted with some new equipment even and works with the police department regarding the ordinances and statutes governing the animal laws in Wentworth.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Yes, sir, step right up.
Andrew Lasser, just want to let everybody know that Animal Control Officer did get interviewed at one of the select board meetings, I think possibly the last one or the one before, two before. That is all on YouTube and it's recorded, so if you want to check that out, there's some information on there. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Anybody else? Article 16, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,000 for the expenses associated with animal and pest control. All in favor of Article 16? Please signify by saying aye. Those who are opposed? The eyes have it. Article 17, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $45,850 for the operating expenses associated with the ambulance services. Motion to bring this to the floor? Motion, RPC. May I have a second? Ellen Thurgood. Questions or comments on this? State your name, please, sir. I'll let you get closer.
My name's George Mill. I did some research and it's gone up $5,000 this year. I did some research and some towns of similar sizes pay in excess of $250,000 for 24-hour ambulance service. I'd also like to do a little plug for the Affordable Community Care Program and how many of you are. That's if you call them for 911 medical service, they will bill your insurance company whatever's left over, they will forgive that amount. And it's $35 for an individual and $50 for a household for a year.
Very good. Anybody have any questions for George Mill? He's trying to get away. You get out of it, George. You're good. Arnie, you have a question?
Not so fast. Yeah, I'd like to take a minute and just reemphasize what George just said.
Arnie, that's not on.
Is the mic on that?
No?
Yep. I'd like to reemphasize what George just said. I spent about two and a half hours going through... I couldn't understand why the increase request to the ambulance services.
Hold on a minute.
Okay, can you hear me? I'm sorry. On this ambulance service thing, I saw that it went up $5,000, so I did a critical analysis of the ambulance service, went over their billing procedures, how they equip their outfit. They have missions in addition to the ambulance service where they also support the food bank. They do a lot of community active things and basically they're underfunded. They're trying to get their head above water and I think they're doing a good idea and they have a good business plan. The select boys reviewed this in detail and really puts all our support behind passing this warrant, but also recommending that you take advantage of their... This fund that George just said, like just kicking in about 40 bucks and you've got guaranteed ambulance service for the whole year for your whole family. That will help in finish getting a vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Article 17, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $45,850 for the operating expenses associated with the ambulance services. All those in favor of Article 17? Signify by saying aye. Those who are opposed? The eyes have it. Article 18, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,300 for the parks and recreation for the general maintenance of the parks, including the Common, Library, Riverside Park, and Hamilton Memorial Field. Motion to bring that to the floor to discuss. Got to talk about it, guys. Somebody throw him. Thank you. Motion, John Mead, saw you first. Second, somebody, William Dieter Skerritt Cady. Questions, comments, discussions? Mr. Mazzie.
This is not an any objection, but questioning the condition of the lawnmower itself because that's getting to be quite old now.
Okay, anybody who feels that at the table? Questioning the condition of the lawnmower?
Eugene's not here.
Eugene is not here, so apparently nobody can answer that for you, Mr. Mazzie.
Has the highway department maintained it and where the superintendent needed it passed?
Hasn't been asked to look at it, but saying it, no.
Has not been asked to look at it, but more maintain it.
I think the selectmen should be forewarned and fast look into what needs to maintenance and do it before it just be on with control.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Article 18, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,300 for the parks and recreation for the general maintenance of parks, including the Common, Library, Riverside Park, and Hamilton Memorial Field. All in favor of Article 18? Please signify by saying aye. Those who are opposed? The eyes have it. Article 19. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $46,190 for the Webster Memorial Library expenses. $9101 to come from library income, $2419 to come from the assigned fund balance, and the remaining sum of $34,670 to come from general taxation. Motion to bring this to the floor? Sure. Nancy Masterson, my gosh, you've waited all day for this. On the second floor, who did I say? Let me throw another hand. There we go. Questions or comments? Do you have the librarian here?
It was brought to my attention that this building, which I have had great regard for, is made out of stone, chicken wire, and wood, which is falling apart in some places, and foam materials. What is the long range, but not too long range, please, plans for correcting these deteriorating effects?
Nancy, is that something you can answer, please?
I'll take it off the microphone. Got to come up to the microphone so we can all hear you. So the recommendation from someone from a preservation... He does preservation analysis, wants to get a structural engineer, which we are hoping to try to scope out some grant money for this because I don't think they're very cheap. The bottom line was the building was not going to crumble down. There were some areas that because of the structure in the basement, we did not have a safe enough ladder to actually get way up close for this person to look at. So there are some places that were water stained, but there's no way to tell whether the water stains were from 75 years ago or a year ago. But as soon as we get the... A test may to get some money for the structural engineer, I believe after that there will be a more detailed plan on where to start, probably looking at some of the water leaking. We were assured that the actual structure is good, the floors aren't warped and things like that. But that's as far as we've gotten.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm curious if you have implemented any of the suggestions from the report, especially about the back wall?
Did you have the report with you that we started on?
I don't. I put the wrong papers in my book. But the last page is talking about the element for the window, which is considered a structural element, and it said it was pulling away. It's not a great deal and suggested putting some pins so you could monitor. And that's something about the bottom slab?
Go up to the microphone, Nancy, to respond, please, if you could.
As far as I can remember, it was my impression we were waiting for a structural engineer to tell exactly what we needed. That was a recommendation in the report, so I'm not sure.
There's something about because they weren't expensive, I think you need a structural engineer.
Okay, you guys are going to have to swap back and forth, please, so that everybody can hear you. No, I understand that, but nobody else can hear you.
It was about some screws or something. They do need a structural engineer and for that I would like to give a suggestion. Price them. There is one, I think it's both a structural engineer and a builder. This is from meetings I went to before in Manchester. I don't know about checking the building, what they cost. I know if they do something expensive. But I'm wondering if there's money in the trust funds that they could use, that would be usable for that.
For the engineer?
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know of the...
You might have to match if you get a degree.
Yeah, the fund I know is set up for mostly to cover emergencies or life repairs and the ADA bathroom. So this is why we need to find out whether it covered the engineer itself, whether that came under or whether we had to ask for a change in the trust fund.
Anything else?
Yes, there's $74,000 in the library spending trust and that would be up to the trustees if they need to spend some of that.
Okay, but does that come under because of the purpose? The purpose that was outlined was originally for large repairs, especially if they were emergencies, like the year the subject kind of blew up, or the ADA bathroom. So I guess the question was, is it a legal move to ask for it, to pay for an engineer if that's not a repair for an emergency? I mean, I'm not sure.
As a personal note, I think it would be an emergency if the building fell down.
Well, yes, it would. Good point.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Article 19, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $46,356 for the maintenance of the police department for the ensuing year for the purposes detailed in the operating budget posted with the warrant. Please note that $11,450 will be funded by the Police Revolving Fund and the balance of $90,906 is to come from general taxation. All in favor of Article 15? Signify by saying aye. Those who are opposed? The eyes have it. Article 19. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $46,190 for the Webster Memorial Library expenses. $9101 to come from library income, $2419 to come from the assigned fund balance, and the remaining sum of $34,670 to come from general taxation. Motion to bring this to the floor? Sure. Nancy Masterson, my gosh, you've waited all day for this. On the second floor, who did I say? Let me throw another hand. There we go. Questions or comments? Do you have the librarian here?
It was brought to my attention that this building, which I have had great regard for, is made out of stone, chicken wire, and wood, which is falling apart in some places, and foam materials. What is the long range, but not too long range, please, plans for correcting these deteriorating effects?
Nancy, is that something you can answer, please?
I'll take it off the microphone. Got to come up to the microphone so we can all hear you. So the recommendation from someone from a preservation... He does preservation analysis, wants to get a structural engineer, which we are hoping to try to scope out some grant money for this because I don't think they're very cheap. The bottom line was the building was not going to crumble down. There were some areas that because of the structure in the basement, we did not have a safe enough ladder to actually get way up close for this person to look at. So there are some places that were water stained, but there's no way to tell whether the water stains were from 75 years ago or a year ago. But as soon as we get the... A test may to get some money for the structural engineer, I believe after that there will be a more detailed plan on where to start, probably looking at some of the water leaking. We were assured that the actual structure is good, the floors aren't warped and things like that. But that's as far as we've gotten.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm curious if you have implemented any of the suggestions from the report, especially about the back wall?
Did you have the report with you that we started on?
I don't. I put the wrong papers in my book. But the last page is talking about the element for the window, which is considered a structural element, and it said it was pulling away. It's not a great deal and suggested putting some pins so you could monitor. And that's something about the bottom slab?
Go up to the microphone, Nancy, to respond, please, if you could.
As far as I can remember, it was my impression we were waiting for a structural engineer to tell exactly what we needed. That was a recommendation in the report, so I'm not sure.
There's something about because they weren't expensive, I think you need a structural engineer.
Okay, you guys are going to have to swap back and forth, please, so that everybody can hear you. No, I understand that, but nobody else can hear you.
It was about some screws or something. They do need a structural engineer and for that I would like to give a suggestion. Price them. There is one, I think it's both a structural engineer and a builder. This is from meetings I went to before in Manchester. I don't know about checking the building, what they cost. I know if they do something expensive. But I'm wondering if there's money in the trust funds that they could use, that would be usable for that.
For the engineer?
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know of the...
You might have to match if you get a degree.
Yeah, the fund I know is set up for mostly to cover emergencies or life repairs and the ADA bathroom. So this is why we need to find out whether it covered the engineer itself, whether that came under or whether we had to ask for a change in the trust fund.
Anything else?
Yes, there's $74,000 in the library spending trust and that would be up to the trustees if they need to spend some of that.
Okay, but does that come under because of the purpose? The purpose that was outlined was originally for large repairs, especially if they were emergencies, like the year the subject kind of blew up, or the ADA bathroom. So I guess the question was, is it a legal move to ask for it, to pay for an engineer if that's not a repair for an emergency? I'm not sure.
As a personal note, I think it would be an emergency if the building fell down.
Well, yes, it would. Good point.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Article 19, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $46,356 Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $86,190 for the Webster Memorial Library expenses. $9,101 to come from the library income, $2,419 to come from the unassigned fund balance, remaining sum of $34,670 come from general taxation. All in favor of Article 19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that are opposed? The ayes have it. Article 20, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,400 for the maintenance and expenses associated. I'm supposed to think there must be a with in there somewhere. There is on that one. Associated with the Wentworth Historical Society Museum, the grounds on which it stands, on which it stands. Motion bring that to the floor. Motion, John Mead. And a second from, Mr. Masterson. Mr. Pascoe.
Craig Pascoe, treasurer of the Historical Society. I'd like to make an amendment to that.
Okay, it's on the bottom.
It would read, would like to amend Article 20, Historical Society, to read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200 for the maintenance and expenses associated with the Wentworth Historical Society Museum and the ground to which it stands. The 2,400, I think some thought we didn't have enough money to cover the roof, that should happen this year.
Okay.
But we do, and this will just help with keeping lights on, propane tank filled, scholarship fund, bring that back, and some paper materials.
Okay.
So reduce that by half, you won't need 2,400 dollars.
Okay. Can I have that written?
Thank you.
Great. They have the amendment from Craig. Francis, did you second that?
I did, yeah.
Okay, you have an amendment to Article 20? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200 for the maintenance and expenses associated with the Wentworth Historical Society Museum, the grounds on which it stands. Any more discussion on that? Anybody get any other questions or anything? Okay, we'll vote the amendment, then we'll vote the amended article. The amendment, to read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200 for the maintenance and expenses associated with the Wentworth Historical Society Museum, the grounds on which it stands. All in favor of this amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that are opposed? Okay, the amended article now reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200 for the maintenance and expenses associated with the Wentworth Historical Society Museum, the grounds on which it stands. All those in favor of the amended article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that are opposed? The amended article is passed. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,000 to conduct deep research and topographical survey for the town's gravel pit. This will enable the town to make a determination, determination as to the future use or sale of this. Motion bring this to the floor. And a second from somebody, Kevin Mack. Questions, would love to select one, like to make a little statement on this, maybe? Can you hear me?
We got you now. Jordan King, I've been working on the town gravel pit in my spare time over the last year, working towards this worth article. The town owns approximately 15 acres between Route 25 and the Baker River on the straightaway by Ray Young's house, Curry's house, there's a Muska lot campground sign, there's a little hidden driveway right there you probably have never noticed. That, that gravel pit slash borrow pit hasn't been used since approximately 2002. Sometime around that time, there was a big storm, and the backside, so not the 25 side, but the backside, the boundary was always the Baker River. About 15 years ago, the river jumped 800 to 1,000 feet and moved its channel, where there used to just be a stream and a culvert to access the gravel pit. That's now where the river sits. This piece of property has now been neglected since then and has provided no use to the town. Because the river's moved, depending on what the deeds say and the laws, we may or may not own that piece of property anymore. It has a title problem. If we do own it, there's potentially a substantial amount of gravel that we could use or sell, or if we don't own it, then it would be good to dump. So we can't do anything with that property until we have a surveyor or lawyer look into it and do the deed research and prove that we still own it and have access. I've spoken to the Hampshire DES about permitting a gravel pit if we do own it. It is possible to get a permit to do a gravel pit in there near the river, believe it or not. If you jump through all of their hoops and we'd have to hire somebody at another future town meeting appropriate money with a better plan to see what we're gonna do. But this money is an estimate that we got, that we should be under, to do preliminary deed research and potentially a little bit of topo, to get an estimate of what we might own and how much gravel there might be. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? You're good.
I oppose the raising of the $8,000 for the purpose stated, for two or three reasons. Number one, there is a court decree giving the town the property that, and I did the research for the selectmen and it's in their possession. Apparently, when the town took over this particular property for back taxes, there was objections on the power of the owner, and it went to court. The decree I'm referring to says the court, the town owns the property. Unless there have been minor leaves put on the property since that time, I have no doubt the town owns the property. In a deed that exists, there are clear denunciations with directions and distances in reference to a former survey of the property. No one, to my knowledge, has looked for that survey until they had, I wouldn't waste my time on another. The southern boundary and the northern boundary are clearly defined by the deed. The westerly boundary is clearly defined by the roadway, and the easterly boundary is clearly defined by the old riverbed. As far as the availability of the gravel in that particular pit, you'd have to go and look at it to fully comprehend what I am talking about. As you walk onto the property, you're probably anywhere from five to 10 feet above what used to be a small brook. At that time, either an eight foot or two eight foot culvert went across that brook and onto the, I'll call it an island, and we settled gravel out of that pit one or more years. At that time, it was determined by somebody more knowledgeable in the values of sanding gravel and I, that it wasn't even worth doing, even with a minor bridge across that small brook. Now that that brook has become, oh, probably two, half to two thirds of wide as this river, as this room, the bridge across that thing there would be unaffordable for anybody that wanted to get any real benefit out of it. And so consequently, I'm opposed to trying to even investigate it, sell the property. There's women on the west side for a house, they have nice river property, we get good tax dollar out.
Thank you. Jordan King, comment again, please.
Yeah, so I can.
Shut her off. There you go.
So I completely disagree. Working in the, in this field and industry, when your deed says you own to the Baker River, and the Baker River moves 1,000 feet, your property moves 1,000 feet. No one's buying that property without having somebody survey it or do the deed research, not even a full survey. No one's paying $1 for that piece of property until you guarantee that you own it, or you will get sued. There's potential for a lot of gravel on that property. Right now, you're gaining nothing from it, and it's been neglected by this town for 15 years. So either continue to waste an opportunity to use a piece of property, or pay $8,000, and it may turn out that it's usable and that we can get a lot of revenue from it, or we may not own it and you can walk away finally. The bridges he's referring to, we built these bridges over rivers too. It wouldn't be a town spec bridge if you wanted to put in a gravel pit. It wouldn't cost 900,000, it costs like 75,000. If there was a million yards of gravel over there, it would pay for itself 10 times over. We're not gonna own the gravel pit, but if you can prove that one can be there, you can sell it to a company that will put in a gravel pit. There's one just down the road, the gravel pond, where they've gone below grade, and they've removed many, 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 many yards of gravel out of there and can do many more. So to not vote for this is just to squander a piece of property that we have for another 15 years. We're not gonna spend the full $8,000 hopefully this year, hopefully it'll be cheaper. Francis has done a lot of the deed research, he's not a licensed surveyor, he's not a lawyer. If we try to proceed with anything without that, it'll be a massive mistake.
Contrary to what was just said, the deed does not say that the town owns to the river. It gives directions and distances along both north and south boundary that clearly tell what the property is used. It doesn't say anything about the terrain until it gets to the old riverbed. That's when it follows the riverbed over on the easterly side, but the property has distances and directions to the old river.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Davis.
Everybody knows you got a, you own property on the river, the river heads out if you don't own it. The only question I've got, Jared, maybe you can knock me out of this. I believe, very seriously, that the pit was closed by the state. It was never closed legally. I, no, we got a letter from, I believe it was the state, that said that something they weren't happy with, with something, and they want, they closed it. Is, is, has the state reconsidered maybe allowing the town to open it if there is gravel there, which I know there is? Dan Woodgravel, honestly, Dan Greg Samuel, who was grinding it up and bringing it down to town, I know that it was really an excessive amount of decent, decent gravel in there. I know because I hauled over. And I just wondered if the state, if they would allow, if all this worked out, if the state would allow the town to go back into operations of the pit.
Please, thank you, go on. That's okay. Okay. So, yes, I did talk to the state, DES people that do this type of permitting. So as it turns out, the town never had a gravel permit.
Right.
Believe it or not.
I know they did.
The only hand, the only map we had was a hand sketch from like 2001 for putting in a culvert.
Right.
There's very poor records. The state had no record of a gravel pit. You, a town can have a borrow pit, which is not a gravel pit, without a permit, which means you can dig into the bank and take stuff out as is, you can't crush gravel, you can take out the big stones and you fill them in the road and, but so the town used the pit for that purpose, they never crushed it there. The state will, if we go through a long process, which you can understand, the state permitting along the river is, the state will though permit that over there. I have spoken to them about it. In fact, they would prefer it, because what you do is you build a burn all the way around and keep all of your materials and everything within it. And then when the river floods, all you've done is dig more area for that water to overflow and expand instead of going down river. So it's actually, they like to see things like that. We can get a permit, and we can get a permit to put a bridge across there as well to access it. So if we can prove we own it, which you have to do, because we'll get sued if you don't.
Right.
If we prove that we can, we can then hire a company to get us through that process. Or even if we can just prove that it can be done, you could consider putting it up to sale to bid with all these big companies around here that do gravel pits, and potentially get income back from this property that's been wasted.
So the state actually never did shut it down for a pick, we never legally.
I've seen no records of it, but there was never a permit. They had told them that you don't have a permit.
So just, just to cease and desist, when the permit was never.
I've never received a document, but I know when I talked to them, they had nothing on file. We're not on their radar at all, but they did say that we couldn't, could do it.
Yeah, that's the only question I had, I didn't know if the state would reconsider for whatever reason if the pit was actually closed by the state.
Yep, they've never even heard of it.
They can't, they can't hold, they can't close the pit because there was another pit established. Okay, thank you.
Any else got any other questions, comments? Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,000 to conduct deep research and topographical survey of the town's gravel pit, this will enable the town to make a determination as to the future use or sale of this property. All those in favor of Article 21, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that are opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,000 to be expended on behalf of the Conservation Commission and Town Forest in connection with activities for such conservation as set forth by RSA 36 dash capital W A and expenses related to the forest here. Motion bring that to the floor. Motion, John Mead, and a second from you, Mr. Anderson. Questions or comments? Yes, please.
There are no current plans for any expenses on the town forest related to the forest here. This is just keeping money in the Conservation Commission, so they can do anything that they would need to do that could crop up. If there was a large wind event that blew down 50 acres out there, and you had to go out and map it or figure out what you're gonna do, there's a little bit of money to pay for a little bit of time. The Conservation Commission may end up having to deal with some of the park stuff. We had a park and rec committee before, last year we tried to resurrect it, we got one volunteer, so we had to scramble to work on the parks last year. If we can't get that resurrected, the Conservation Commission might kind of handle both. So, but anyways, at the moment, there's no plans for any forest or expenses. This is just putting a little bit of money into that account. If we do it with others, if you knock some of it down or anything like that, it's not gonna bother me at all.
Yes. Go ahead.
Also, the.
Stop poking the buttons.
I don't know.
You can now.
Also, the Hampshire Timber Association contacted the town to help develop the town forest, and this is, this can be a little seed money to.
Put the microphone closer. Then speak.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think.
Could be a bad one.
No, that's gotta pull that in.
Conservation Commission is really, we're trying to regenerate interest in it. There's a couple of people who are now finishing in the next year, and they want to reestablish the Conservation Commission. They want to develop the town forest for recreation and help to work for the forest or preserve the value of the town forest. And the Hampshire Timberlands Association wants to get involved with that, to help guide us with state funds and federal funding to help with these potential projects in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else? Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,000 to be expended on behalf of the Conservation Commission and Town Forest in connection with the activities for such conservation as set forth in RSA 36 dash capital W A, the expenses related to the. the expenses related to the forester. All in favor of article twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that are opposed, your eyes have it. Before I hit article twenty-three, remember, anybody that needs to be sworn in, into the meeting, please. Article twenty-three, to transact any other business that might legally come before this meeting. Does anybody have anything else to bring up? Andy, you have something.
Not sure if this is a good time to, to bring it up, it's specifically around the broadband, like a broadband update.
Sure.
So, Andy Lassier, I've been working on with various different companies to figure out how we can bring higher-speed internet to town. I've been working on this, honestly, for, I think, at least probably the last year or so. Luckily, we've come into the situation where N H T C, the Electric Co-op, has received federal grant money to help build out a high-speed fiber optic network in town, and they have guaranteed us that they are going to deploy this to a hundred percent of town. This means that anybody with consolidated communications right now that has, you know, just awful internet speeds, if you have an issue with spectrum, whatever you have, this is gonna provide much, much, much faster internet and much more reliable internet. So I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. N H T C is going to be starting this process as early as, I think, maybe midsummer possibly, and should be completing the build out of broadband within two years. Now, that's their deadline, and very well may get deployed much quicker than that. I don't know if anybody had any questions at all.
Thank you for your homework, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Andy. Yes?
I just wanted to ask the selectmen, was one of our town employees leaving for another job? Are we posting for the third man in the immediate future?
This is in reference to the highway department?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the answer is yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Like this week, next week?
We're trying to get through this meeting.
Good, almost do that.
We, we have an aggressive program for the spring and the summer for improving the quality of roads in the town, and we will need a third person to accomplish those tasks. I think the key thing that we're gonna work for is a qualified person that fits the presentation that we have. So we'll be researching, and we want to find the right person, we want to take our time.
But you're gonna post the position, like within a couple of weeks? Like on the town webpage and the.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? I would entertain a motion to, Janie. Motion from Sonia Schaller. Yeah, maybe drop your voter cards back, please. Motion to adjourn. Sonia Schaller. And the second from, anybody taking a. That's it, take it away.